Hey, how's it going? Hey. Good, how are you?
Are you putting the name tags out?
I was going to, since they weren't done yet.
Yeah.
What's wrong with like things get kicked off? I have a conflict of interest on these boards.
Okay.
So I don't know where that that's at.
Um.
Last Mary or?
I say right before we kind of get started.
Okay.
I'll, you know.
Yeah, if you could just give me a couple minutes.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Let me just say again, huh? Mr. Deacon, I think he sits between there, right? Down here. John. There's John.
Hi, everybody.
Terry. Terry, Phil, me. Is Mary still here? Is she gonna be here?
I don't know if she's coming or not. I don't think so.
You got new mics?
Yes, new mics, and last time they were very staticky and teeny and loud.
Yeah, they were fantastic.
And poppy, yeah. They were great.
Hi, Terry, how are you?
Good to see you.
Yes.
Hi, Terry.
She's trying to stay out of trouble.
I was wondering reducing the paper load there. Is that there yet?
Almost.
Just a little chair. That's why you show up early.
That's right, switch it out.
I know, I sat down, I'm like, oh wow, I feel some time.
I didn't change it.
Mary, are you gonna be here tonight? Okay.
Oh, okay, so then I'll leave the short chair there then.
I didn't want to leave your name tag out, you know, trying to be fair.
This is gonna be here next month for you.
That's what I heard. That is good, do we have a tag for her? Paper one, good.
We talked a little bit today.
Good. Hey, um. I didn't, I didn't print any zone, I didn't print the language out, I just thought.
The rooms are changing.
Thought it would cause more confusion.
It's good, it's good.
This time.
Yeah.
So I didn't intend to print them out.
Okay.
The one thing I thought of, I wanted to mention before I forget, is adding in a recording requirement.
Okay. Yep.
I think that might be a good idea.
Right? Yeah.
Saying something, this must get, this must get recorded on the registry of deeds if approved.
Oh, yeah. I have it on my desk.
Does it, does it have one?
I'll push booze in there.
Yeah, who are?
I don't know, I mean, it is my last.
It's really small.
I did my homework, you know, this afternoon. I even had that.
Asking, telling them.
From the state.
What is actually trying to amend?
Did, what, did, did they get you something?
Oh, yeah, it came in the mail, everything that went on for voting and things like that.
Oh, nice. Grab Mary, but it's a workshop.
It's the same thing.
But I think we just say one.
Just when it comes to voting, I think.
When I try to change the order.
You talking to me?
No.
Okay, good, cuz I wasn't listening.
I just figured it wouldn't.
I, I met all of them. I guilted Jared, Jared Golden was gonna, was gonna skip us, and then I caught him coming up the elevator. And I was just like, hey, there's sixteen of us from Maine here to see you, and he's got his lunch, and he's like, okay, uh, I guess I'll make time for you. Um, but yeah, I was glad that I guilted him to sit down.
It has some pictures somewhere.
Yeah.
Remember the, the appeals day.
Everybody. It was a busy day.
Oh, yeah.
Got to ride in the subway.
We started it rolling.
Oh, that was fun.
We started it rolling, remember?
Yeah. They took us the, well, the aides took us for meetings, so.
Last year, wasn't it?
Staffers took us over to see Susan Collins.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Crazy.
They said what wasn't, what wasn't working for them.
When I was in high school. Subway cars or something.
Crazy.
That was.
My wife and I got a cat, and there's two dogs in there.
Just kept coming out to be like, do you have a meeting? And he's like, no, I like these people.
It's about that long. That's got a proper dog, kidding.
Yep. Hey, Mary.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. Let's go.
Yep, I will.
Did you see too?
Yep.
Hey.
Yeah, Matt sent me this.
Yeah.
She's in front of me, she actually works.
Oh, okay.
I don't, but one of the other.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, um. What you're requesting.
Oh, for the, oh, for the, the, not pine tree legal. I was like, okay, I was like, that's a different entity, yeah. So I'm representing the ones that are there.
Got who now? Little chick.
Represent.
These, no, these, no, these, no.
There's not gonna be anything.
They're working better.
Um, tonight, but, um.
Somebody just came in.
Yeah, I think, um.
Yeah, I would get it out there and just want to know whether you think.
Yeah, I think he'll try to catch.
Partially considering.
Yeah, yeah. No, I wanna get it all out.
Proposal.
You gotta go up, down, or you're good with that?
It, nothing's gonna be, it's really, it's on.
The temperature of the council.
Yeah, and I think, but, um, but I think you do wanna get it out there and, um.
So how you doing?
Ask the rest of the council whether.
Well, I'm glad to see Kathy that.
There's, you know, any objections to.
The other day, that made my frigging year. See how happy she was and.
It was a workshop.
Out there, man.
Okay, voting on anything.
What you two went through for a month?
It doesn't item on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you do have a conflict of interest, you just, you know, just recuse yourself, but, um, it sounds like you're.
Oh, cool.
You're not feeling that would, you know, correct to the deal or your, you know.
Take, uh, I won't get a gain from them.
Yeah, right.
Cuz they're not my clients.
Yeah, right.
You did what?
It's.
Oh, okay, here, you have mine.
Understood, I mean, you wouldn't be able to.
Actually, there's nothing in a package at all.
At first to them or something like that.
There was nothing in a package at all.
So I think, I think you might wanna just, I think it would be good. Raise that and, um. No, they've been. At the top of the table. Several times. You didn't get one of these? This is, this is all there was. Yeah, this comes up for the council.
I got just one paper, I just went and got my stuff out of my.
It's not a reading, it's just an update.
I had, I had, I. All I got was this here in my packet this week, that's all I got.
Yep. All there was.
For this zoning thing, they've been here before.
How are you? Good to see you.
Also, cuz I missed one meeting, remember? I think that was a meeting.
Oh, yep, yep.
So I, I have no idea how, how we get to this point.
We're gonna give an update.
Yeah, let me turn that door.
Yeah, okay.
Did you ever see this history of this? It's unbelievable.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was, um, I was.
That's right.
Camp had no. She's on the post for House eighty-five seats this year. Yeah.
Oh, really? Yeah.
They only had until yesterday, you know. Very little, I should say.
Not the way I would do things.
So you have the presentation.
Yeah, this is what they, they emailed me.
Oh, yeah, we got five.
Yeah, we used to go five minutes, seven minutes, actually. So what are you doing, you enjoying the summer, you, you doing anything with the girls, like, if you guys going anywhere?
Sure does. I was reading now my wife's name, one of them.
Why are the mics standing there? I haven't turned it yet. Oh, so you are down.
Yeah.
Sometimes you forget and we can hear. Last time it was, they were really loud.
Yes.
Yeah, bad.
Too loud?
No, last time they were.
Last time they were.
Very loud, but we'll see.
Very, very loud.
Yeah, which is loud.
Wanna do a test?
I actually listened to it, and you, sometimes it sounded like we were actually screaming, you know.
Yep.
With that.
We were, we were waiting.
I'm put, Terry probably got a push up.
I saw you sit, I saw you when they say, oh, don't get so close, so I went back.
No, I kid ya.
I do.
Don't slide it, you gotta go forward.
Well, there was somebody that changed in my chair.
You want me to wheel you in there, old boy?
She swapped chairs with me and that kinda stuff.
It wasn't me.
No, it wasn't you.
Hey, you want that one, try that one.
Yeah, no, the short one, I just moved to Mary's empty seat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Try that one there, I think that one's a lot taller.
I don't wanna be tall.
Cuz John's sets up there pretty good.
Terry, how was your vacation?
It wasn't a vacation, but it was good.
Mom and dad?
No, I was in DC for, just to lobby our reps about homeless issues.
Pine Tree Estates, that's familiar.
Vacation next month. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello? Are we, are we getting out? I don't think we're getting out.
Not now.
I don't know, you tell me.
I think it's good.
Does it sound okay?
Okay.
Doesn't sound like you're yelling at me.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other night, that's the first thing I said, these are way too loud. The last thing I am is loud.
Has anybody heard from John or Mr. Deacon about being here tonight? I know I heard, I haven't.
No. Uh, Mr. Deacon's here right now.
I can see him now.
Let's go back in.
These are good glasses, you know.
Yeah, I gotta get a pair.
I saw my chair go.
I saw you the other day, I'm always losing mine. I lost a pair down in New Hampshire, left them on the counter down there, my driving glasses the other day. A woman said, did anybody leave these glasses? And I said, no, mine are in the truck. I'm halfway home, I've reached over to, cuz they're my driving ones, I've reached over to grab them, they weren't there, no, they were there. But I go down every few weeks.
Thank you. And we don't take minutes. Well, easy.
Easy.
Hmm. How long is the dog, is up for?
Uh, Thursday.
Till Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, they bring family with them, or just the three girls, huh?
Three dogs and a cat.
And a cat. So we know who's getting all the attention, the cat, right? Oh, yeah, I bet you guys, yeah.
They got it this afternoon.
Oh, jeez. That's when you know you're running out of things to talk about, so you got a cat, so you can talk about that.
It's all blank.
Yeah, good. Howdy.
Yeah, rain.
Maybe it's not gonna rain, but who knows?
Well, it won't, cuz you carried an umbrella for all of us.
Yeah, right.
Appreciate that.
One by one. Well, it rained earlier in the day, I lost track of the weather, but.
Okay, good evening, we're gonna call this Standish Town Council Workshop to Order. Uh, today is Tuesday, the twenty-third, and it is six PM. Uh, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're gonna do a roll call. So we'll, Deacon?
Here.
Christie?
Present.
Uh, Gaba?
Here.
Uh, Gardner is absent. Uh, Thomas?
Here.
Harmelow?
Here.
And Watson, uh, sixth president. And the new business.
There you go.
If.
Yeah, staff will.
Staff, Scott, or Zach, sorry.
That's all right. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark first for, um, just a quick overview of the contract zone and what's being proposed to, to you tonight.
Have you already done the disclosure or?
No, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Um, I need to put a disclosure, a conflict of interest on record. My Portland office represents Pine Tree Estates MHC LLC in doing their evictions. And although I don't control that litigation whatsoever, I wanna put that out there in the event that the council wants to decide how I should proceed going forward.
I have no objection.
Are there any objections to Ms. Thomas?
I think, we're not voting tonight anyways, but I think in the council, we really have to look at that because it's, it could be considered a conflict, I would assume, where she does have legal representation of this, these people, even though it's not US law for him, so I would have to think hard on that one.
I agree for now, we're not voting any, so I think we're all good.
Okay, thank you.
Tonight, I think you'll participate as usual, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's just a workshop tonight. Um, so just to give you an overview, the, I think the idea tonight was for me to provide just a, a brief overview of the contract zoning process for any new counselors or a refresher for counselors who haven't dealt with contract zoning, uh, in a while. Um, and then for, to turn it over to the developer to present, uh, sort of, do a presentation on their proposed expansion project, and also what they're proposing in their, um, contract zoning agreement that they are, um, requesting, uh, or they, they plan to request, so. And then the overall point of tonight is to just have a workshop discussion, uh, to try to, to take the temperature of the council, for, for the developer to see sort of where the council is on the, on the con, on the idea of, of a contract zone. Um, and they can, you know, address that further when it's their, their turn for their presentation. So just, just to start off on, on contract zoning, so contract zoning is, is provided both under state law and also under the town's ordinance. Um, so under state law, municipalities are authorized to allow for contract zoning in their ordinances. Um, they have to be consistent with their comp, with your, with your comp plan, and they have to be consisting with, consistent with existing and permitted uses, um, in the zone, the underlying zone. And they need, then they can, they can include conditions or restrictions on, that relate to the development or use of the property. And so your ordinance is, you know, adds, you know, some procedure to that, and also some more detail to that overall authority that the statute gives to the town. Um, and so under the town's ordinance, this is in chapter one eighty-one, um, contract zoning is set forth in section one eighty-one dash eleven of the code. Um, and I'll just, you know, read a little bit from, from the provision that, that sort of, this is the overview. Uh, conditional or contract zoning is authorized for development where, for reasons such as the unusual nature or unique location of the, the development proposed, the town council exercising its sole and exclusive judgment as a legislative body of the town of Standish may find it necessary or appropriate to impose by agreement with the property owner or otherwise certain conditions or restrictions not generally applicable to other properties similarly zoned. All rezoning under this section shall establish rezoned areas that are compatible with the existing and permitted uses within the original zones. Nothing shall authorize a rezoning or an agreement to change or retain a zone that is inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So that's, again, sort of mirroring that statutory language that has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, has to be consistent with, um, existing and permitted uses within the underlying zone. And so a, a contract zone is sort of an overlay on top of, of, of an underlying zone. It will add, sort of, it's, they call it an overlay, cuz it sort of layers on some, you know, different provisions that will supersede the, the underlying zone for certain things. And you'll, you'll hear from the developer in terms of what they're requesting the, the contract zone to provide. Now, the, the ordinance also lays out the procedure, um, you know, for contract zoning and how it's, how it's designed to work in the town of Standish. And, you know, every town can do things, you know, more or less their own way, but the statute does provide, require certain things as well. Um, so the, the first step, um, well, here we have a first step that's sort of not within the, within the ordinance, but, uh, in, the Pine Tree had, had requested to have this initial sort of workshop meeting with the council, uh, sort of to get the temperature of the council. This is not something that's necessarily spelled out or contemplated in the, in the ordinance, but, uh, it certainly makes sense to, you know, to allow a, a developer to ha, to have some understanding whether the, the idea is even, you know, something that, uh, the council's interested in entertaining. But the first official step, um, you know, is, under the ordinance is that there's an optional, um, conceptual sketch plan step for the planning board, um, prior to submitting an application, and that, that's an optional step that's not required. Um, but the ordinance does provide for that. And then the application for a rezoning is submitted to the planning board under the ordinance, and it has to conclaim, contain certain information, like a proposed contract zoning agreement, and a fee, you know, for the application, that kind of thing. So that's the, that's the, that's sort of what kicks it off, is that, that application to the planning board. The next section of the ordinance talks about the planning board public hearing, so that's something that's required under the statute as well. So the statute requires the municipal reviewing authority, which is in Standish, the planning board, um, to hold the public hearing on, on the proposal, um, just like with any other rezoning proposal. I mean, a, a contract zone is really, it, it is a rezoning, it's just, uh, different, in a different format, because it's, is a contract and agreement between the developer and the town. Um, so the planning board holds a public hearing on the proposed application, there's certain notices that need to be posted and published in the paper and, and provided to a butters and that, that sort of thing. There's, uh, there's also a, um, the provision in the ordinance that says where site plan or subdivision review is required for the propos, the use proposed in the rezoning request, such review must be completed before the town council takes final action to approve or deny the rezoning request. But before that happens, um, it's sort of next, next, next up is the town council's, uh, turn. So once that, that planning board hearing happens, um, then the request goes to the council for consideration. And, um, that, for that, you know, sort of, the initial, I mean, per, per your council rules, you have a first reading, you have a, a public hearing, and then a, a final reading. And I think the way that, uh, Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, the way that, that, that the council has done, um, contract zones in the past is, uh, do the, the first reading, um, and then it's, then if, if it passes the first reading, it then goes back to the planning board for the site plan subdivision review that, that I just mentioned before. Um, and then there's a, uh, once, you know, if there is, if, if the approval is granted, um, any approvals that are needed from the planning board are granted, then, uh, that comes back to the council, um, pursuant to that provision that says that, that has to be completed before the council takes final action, um, to approve or deny the request. Um, and then, uh, once it's back to the council, sort of for that, that second round, there's a public hearing and then final, final reading, um, by, by the council. So that's, that's generally a rule, it's, um, a little bit of sort of, you know, you know, ping ponging in a way, but, um, that's just, that's the way that it's, um, it's set up in the ordinance. Um, the, uh, just like any other ordinance, it's effective, it's effective thirty days after enactment. Um, and then there's a, you know, requirement to, uh, record, uh, contract zone in the registry of deeds, um, and that, um, at that point, uh, it, you know, becomes, you know, effective. Um, and, and able to be acted upon by a developer in that contract zone area pursuant to the, the provisions in the agreement. And again, uh, and then the, the developer will, will, will talk about this in terms of what they're, they're proposing, but contract zoning agreements typically will ha, will have a, a section of sort of what the restrictions or requirements are. Um, the sort of, you know, um, you know, things that relate to the property, the development, that kind of thing. Um, and they will, they'll describe, you know, what those are. But, uh, broadly speaking, the, just the, this is the framework of a, of a contract zoning agreement, there will be some recital clauses at the beginning that sort of lay out everything, also lay out what, um, whether the, you know, how, how this proposal is, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, because that's a requirement. Um, then there will be the provision that, that relates to the land use requirement or the, the zoning requirement that is being, uh, that's sort of modified or, or different in the contract zone, um, than in the underlying zone. And then there will be some, um, requirements of the developer to do, you know, as, as, as part of the, the, the project or the proposal. Um, and there will be some, you know, enforcement provision in there to enforce the provisions of the agreement, um, if, what happens if the project doesn't get developed, or what happens if the, you know, there are certain provisions of the agreement that are violated during the, during the, the, the process, that sort of thing. Um, and then there's a bunch of other, you know, sort of miscellaneous kind of boilerplate provisions that are in there, but that's the general structure, at least, um, of a, a contract zoning agreement, and that's, um, you know, the, as I described, sort of the general process in Standish for going, you know, sort of soup to nuts on, on, on a contract zone. So, um, I don't know, Zach, if you think I left anything out on the, on the, on the procedure, uh, the process? It's been, I don't know, what, twenty twenty-two since the last time you did one or something, was that?
Yeah, just, um, quickly, I think that the reason for the ping ponging between the two boards is obviously, I think the roles, the council has to look at the contract zone itself, and then, um, the planning board obviously looks more at the plan itself and, and the site plan and making sure all those engineering requirements are fulfilled, so it's kind of, just.
Yeah. Um, if, are there any questions, sort of about the process first, and then, um, the more of the, the nitty gritty of the proposal will be the, the developer's presentation, so.
Mr. Deacon? Thank you, uh, for sharing that. I, I think it's helpful for the public, uh, as well as others to know, what are the reasons why any of the parties might want contract zoning? I think you might say, in summary, and you can tell me your perspective on this, or others might have some comment, that, uh, a contract zone allows a, uh, the person proposing the contract zoning to perhaps do some things that might not otherwise be permitted in the zoning. On the other hand, the public entity has the opportunity to put in certain requirements that might not otherwise be required, uh, in the, uh, otherwise zoning rules. So there are elements where each party gets to do something that might not otherwise be the typical part of the building process. So there are advantages to both the public potentially to im- impose additional requirements and opportunities for the contractor to. and opportunities for the contractor to do things that might have been difficult or impossible to do otherwise. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's a good way to describe it. I think it's a give and take, it's an agreement, you know, so there's, you know, each side is, um, agreeing to do something, and as you pointed out, um, certainly, the underlying zone, if the, if the underlying zone provided what they wanted, then the, the contract zone would not be needed. But the flip side of that is that, as you pointed out, there are, um, you know, it, on, you know, almost any contract zone, I've seen, the only agreement I've seen, there are agreements about to, to do things that, as you point out, are not necessarily required as a, as a sort of either a site plan review standard or a subdivision review standard, but it, but something that is, is agreed to, to do, um, sort of in exchange for that, uh, that zoning provision. So, yeah, and I, and I think, you know, as, as your ordinance points out, it's for reasons such as unusual nature or unique location of, of a development, that kind of thing. So it's, um, in that, and for that reason, it's sort of this, this idea of being an overlay on top of the, the underlying zone. So the, the underlying zoning provisions don't go away, but the overlay sort of replaces or supplants certain of the, of the ordinance provisions. In this case, there's only really one dimensional requirement that they're, um, that they're looking to, to modify, but sometimes there are multiple, you know, uh, much more complex contract zoning agreements that, you know, deal with, um, other, other issues, other zoning provisions as well, so.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Mark?
I, I have plenty of questions, but I think I'd like to see, hear the presentation.
Go ahead.
Good evening, pleasure to be back in front of everybody. My name is Bill Anderson, I'm with Atwell. We're development consultants, uh, to RHP Properties, who are the owners and operators of the property. They are here with us, uh, this evening as well, including the president, and our local consultants are here, engineers, and our attorney, Kristen Collins, who will, uh, talk more specifically about the contract. So I just want to take a brief couple minutes to kind of, I think we got some new members here, might not be intimately involved in the history, I'd like to just go through a little, a little snapshot on the history, and then take a look at our plan, that's been pretty consistent for a while, give you an overview on the plan, and then I'm going to turn it over, um, to talk details about, uh, the, the contract and those terms, if that's, works for everybody. Zach, you can take it to the next slide. So again, I, we were chatting before the meeting, I think I came here in 2020 and met with some folks, uh, but the first big part of the process for us on this expansion was going to the zoning board of appeals. And we originally submitted to the town in the spring of '21, um, and that's a pretty extensive process that applies, I think maybe only to MH and your residential group. And we had to do a bunch of studies and meeting with all the town, state, and federal agencies. We had meetings, plan reviews, site visits, uh, we did multiple studies through that process to verify there was no impacts to all the environmental factors from, from noise to fish to streams to threatened endangered species to water supply, uh, to wastewater supply, uh, you name it, we, we looked at it with the zoning board of appeals, um, soil erosion, uh, multiple state sidewalks with, um, the state agencies, both, uh, state and federal. And it really drove our plan process, which I'll show you shortly as, as well. So we went through that zoning board of appeals process, uh, where we ended up getting approval in October of '22. At that point, again, we had done a lot of the work, did most of the engineering from where we were at, and then we started with the township planning board, uh, top, planning board and, and town council approval process. We submitted in February of '23, about a year and a half ago. We had multiple engineering meetings there, went to the planning board, and, uh, what occurred is obviously we came on to, uh, an interpretation of the issue of the lot width. We have been posing a 60-foot, uh, lot width for our, our home sites, and it was determined by the township that your cluster ordinance doesn't apply to MH, um, so we were to have to, uh, get a variance for that, and that, that was one of the bigger issues, um, is our desire to have a 60-foot lot width, which matches over half the home sites out there, but that drove us into where we're heading today, this contract zoning agreement. The other issue, which was stated as well, is we had gone through our study process, we'd offered certain things in the existing community, and other things have been brought up through the resident through the years, and there needed to be a way to tie those in to this expansion. So I think the contract agreement can accomplish both those, um, a zoning modification and some of the things we've obligated, uh, to as well. So that's where we are today. Uh, I think we spoke in March, in the March, we had, uh, an initial workshop with some folks, and we've been working with your attorney on a draft, uh, since then. Next slide, again, we'll get into those details in a second, just a couple minutes on our plan. Uh, you'll see the gray area there. The gray area is our existing park, that's Osapi Trail, Route 25 on the north side there, running east-west, we have about four entrance, entrances off there. Our gray existing parks, 123 home sites out there. Again, about half of our, or, or greater than half are a 60-foot width, which is what we're talking about for our expansion. Some are a little wider, have individual septics on them, uh, portion, but that, that's our existing community. What we're looking at doing is putting some additional homes on the southwest side there. We have some opens, open space, open park area, a little storage area, we want to relocate some storage area, and then we have a big area on the southeast side, as you can see, and we're looking at putting a fair number of units, uh, on the southeast side. Uh, just starting at about 11 o'clock up there, you'll see a blue dot, that's our existing clubhouse, uh, and our entrance, our main entrance. Uh, RHP's done significant improvements to the clubhouse, I think I got some pictures in here, I'll show you, since they've been there. Also mentioning, uh, we've, I, I noted on the plan in the gray area, we're going to do some, uh, water system upgrades, uh, heading over to the expansion area, uh, we're putting, uh, you see a red line sidewalk, um, route, uh, through that expansion, eastern loop, it's a nice little loop, that's probably where we'll have our, uh, most of our active adult folks, so that's going to make sense there. We have a couple little, uh, bench park areas there in that expansion area, you'll see the red dots, one will just be like an overlook to the Josie Creek, our property lines, really that Josie Creek right there in the southeast, so that'll be nice. The other little bench and sitting area is really our access point to Dow Road, which is a, a secondary access point that we, uh, will maintain as part of the expansion. Moving further along the southwest, you'll see, uh, we relocate our storage to allow, we have, uh, some, uh, boat RV storage, uh, that'll get just pushed over to that central area. And then we're looking to add some amenities to the existing park. Right now, we have a park, and I got some, some pictures for you that, uh, again, RHP's completely redone since they've owned the park, I don't know, four to six, four to five years now, and we're going to add, uh, some additional amenities to that. But again, that colored area is really the limits of our expansion. The whole acreage is about 166 acres. Um, we're looking at about that plan right there, and that's the plan that was reviewed and discussed in great detail, um, with all the agencies, your zoning board of appeals and your planning board has seen that. That, that one has 133 home sites. As you can see, there's a lot of land area to the south of that loop on the southeast side, that's where our units used to be there. Through all the site discussions and, uh, studies, it was, it was strongly urged that we cluster that up to the north and not head down to that south side. Um, so this is the culmination of all those studies and, and layouts. Uh, again, 133 home sites you're looking at when we're done, this will be, uh, one of our terms of the contract, is this will be the last expansion, um, and we're going to end up with about 118 acres of open space at the end of that, and that's what a lot of that excess property will be. Just to quickly, so that's our expansion, uh, just to show you a couple of pictures, then I'll turn it over. Uh, these are some of the existing Pine Tree Estates homes, the, the bottom, uh, the upper, upper right there is, uh, one of a multi-section home. Those homes are probably 28 by 56, a multi-section, those fit on, on all of our lots, we have a mix of, of homes through there, but that's a, that's a nice home. We go to the next picture. The lo- lower left there is a typical, you get a feel for our lots, so a lot of them will have a, a shed and a tree and a nice yard. Uh, the minimum side yard is about 30 feet, because if you think, figure our homes are anywhere from, some of those homes are 14, some are up to 28, still allows for about 30-foot minimum between homes, so nice side yard area for sheds, provide driveways, et cetera, just some more homes from the existing community. Uh, there's another one, the upper left is our main entrance way, uh, if you went off further in, inside, you'd, you'd come to our clubhouse, there's a bus stop down there, et cetera. Um, the lower left is our, is our playground, that's a playscape, uh, we got some picnic areas and all that, so that'll, that'll remain, we're actually going to add to that with a couple more amenities as part of the expansion. There are some pictures of our, our clubhouse, um, you'll see the in, nice interior. Uh, RHP does a lot of coordinating with the residents, I think they got three events this month, I think they might have five events planned next month, so they really try to engage their residents in gathering and dinners and game, family game nights and what have you, and, and really activate, um, the residents and get to know everybody, and, and they, they use this facility to do that quite often, so that's a picture of, of our, our clubhouse out there. I think, that might be it. This is a rendering, and then Kristen, I'll turn it over to you. Unless anyone had any questions on the plan, I could do it now, or do you want to hear the?
I just got one question with your size. Do you have, I don't notice, I don't notice one trailer that's on a 100-foot wide lot, do you have any pictures of those?
Um, that's...
Because it seems like we kind of wanted to stay with 100 the last time you were here, and then you come in tonight and show us all 60-foot lots, I'd like to, I wish you had included a 100-foot wide lot.
100 is certainly a lot larger, if you want to clip back.
I mean, all the clips just show you 60-foot wide ones, it would be nice to be able to compare.
Though they're probably 60, that lower right might be 100, I didn't specific, I couldn't specifically tell you that, you don't think...
It's not 100.
I don't see the adjacent home, I don't, it's hard to tell. And again, our lot size is going to remain the same, because you could do a hun- 100-foot wide, 120 deep, and we're going to do, uh, 60 in a deeper yard. And the key really for us, the 60-foot, and I'm telling you, I do MH, manufactured housing community design literally across the United States, and 60, the one we're talking about tonight, is the largest width we're, we're doing. I mean, we're trying to do affordable housing, so you're generally in the 30, 40, a lot of them are 50-foot width. This 60-foot width is, is a, I know for folks that live on 1, 5, 10 acres, it sounds small, but the 60-foot width is really a wide lot. People put, you know, 2, 3, 4,000 square foot single-family homes on lots that size. These are, these are 14 to 28-foot wide, um, but I don't have a specific picture of 100.
You don't have 100-foot, and that's what you have, that's what you're s- scheduled to build in the ordinances today that we have.
That's our, that's our one request, and really, it's, we think we should apply to the cluster zoning and have that ability to cut our lot size in half.
I think you should have put 100-foot wide trailer so we could compare them to the 60, since that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's true.
Since that's what we're just talking about. It bothers me that it's not there.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify that, uh, with that creek on the southeast side, I believe it was...
Josie Creek, yes.
Yes, that, uh, none of the lots, uh, would be in a flood zone?
Nope, we're well north of the flood zone, and we're 125 feet, the lot is 125 feet off, uh, the setback, and that was a lot of discussion.
In distance, and is there a height difference between the flood zone and with the lots?
Yeah, for, for sure, yes, yep, significant difference, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, where we just came out with that flood zone mapping, I just wanted to make sure that that was taken into consideration.
Yeah, the whole country's updated over the last, I don't know, two to four years, and we're, we'll be dialed in, we'll, we'll be fine against the flood plan, yes. Anything else on the plan, or, if not, I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you."
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kristen Collins, I'm RHP Properties' local counsel. Um, I want to walk you through a little bit of what you will see in the agreement when you get a draft, and I think we're quite close to distributing that to you. Uh, we've had, I think, uh, two iterations of drafts that have gone between staff and the town attorney and myself on behalf of RHP. I think we are quite close, actually, in having specific language agreed to, that would be what goes in front of the planning board and the council. Uh, if you were to see it tonight, it would have some red lines on it, that would probably make you think there's more to work on than there is, uh, but our conversations today show that we're actually really close. There's not a lot that's, that's being talked about in this agreement, as, um, your attorney said, you know, this is not the kind of contract zoning agreement you might see where there are lots of concessions being made, um, from both sides. So, uh, the first part of the, uh, contract zoning agreement that is required by the ordinance too is that it comply with the comprehensive plan, and so you'll see a recitation in there of various, um, comments from the comprehensive plan that we think support this agreement. And I'll just highlight a couple of them. Number one, uh, new types of housing are promoted to accommodate senior housing. Uh, number two, development of affordable decent housing opportunities is the second stated goal of the plan. The fourth stated goal of the plan is to maintain and improve, improve existing housing opportunities involving mobile homes, so right on point to what we're trying to do here. Clustered housing designs are encouraged to minimize loss of rural character and reduce the length of new roads and utilities, and that gets, uh, right to the heart of what RHP is trying to do here. By clustering the development in here, yes, it does mean narrower lots, but it also means less infrastructure, um, to build, less cost that gets passed on to the consumer of these housing products, and overall more affordable housing opportunity for people in this town. And as, uh, Mr. Anderson sort of hinted at, when we first brought this proposal to the town, we actually were operating under the presumption that because this is a clustered design, we would be able to take advantage of clustered housing bonuses that are available under the existing ordinance. Ultimately, we got an illegal opinion from the town's attorney that said that was not available to a mobile home park. Um, so, we talked about maybe an ordinance amendment that would have just done that, uh, but the council, um, the last iteration of the council thought it better to proceed more on a contract zoning basis, so we are not, you know, doing a regulation that applies to future developments, but really looking at this one and what it has to offer. So what does it have to offer? You know, we have a version of this plan that we certainly could put forward, that has 100-foot lot widths, um, but would give up some other opportunities. And the opportunities that we're looking to provide, that you'll see in the agreement, are, um, number one, preservation of that 118 acres of open space that would not otherwise be preserved, um, creating and preserving these wildlife corridors that were important to DEP and IFNW. The ability to provide and preserve 50% of this development to the 55 and over age community, so getting right at that goal of the comprehensive plan. Providing sidewalks that are not, not otherwise required by the ordinance, um, to give that, you know, better quality of life, um, particularly to this over 55 community. And, for those of you who were involved, um, in all of the prior discussions, you know, one thing that was brought up consistently was perceived deficiencies in the water system serving the existing development. And as part of this proposal, we are agreeing to make certain improvements to that water system, um, put in place new protocols to make sure that shutdowns are minimized to the extent possible. Um, there would be some peer review of that process, so that a third party's taking a look to make sure we're doing all we can within the constraints of, you know, we can't, um, tear out and replace that entire system, but we're going to make targeted improvements. And there are also, just by being able to build... And there are also, just by being able to build this addition to the park, the ability to sort of create redundancies um, and have the ability frankly, to just have a better functioning, um, more financially viable park for RHP and create the cash flow needed to be able to make some of these improvements. So that's the long and short of it. Um, in terms of the procedure going forward, I think the understanding is that the council will see the application when we make it. I think we were hoping for an opportunity to have the council actually look at the language and have a little bit of a vote of confidence before it goes to the planning board. And we're also looking for opportunities for, um, efficiency to avoid that ping pong effect so that the planning board might have some issues, and the council might have some issues, and we don't wanna be in a situation of addressing the planning board's issues than going to the council to find that the council doesn't support that or has something else. Uh, so one thing I think we talked about with staff was can we find an opportunity, for instance, for a combined hearing with the planning board and the council so that everybody can get their thoughts and issues on the table, and we can try to work through them at the same time. Uh, I hope that opportunity might still be available, and I think maybe it would be at the public hearing and first reading stage. Um, so the planning board's public hearing, and then the council's first, um, reading. But, um, the goal, of course, is to get something the council is comfortable with, something you feel serves your citizens, um, provides housing opportunities, and, um, you know, really kind of focuses on this comprehensive plan and, and what development is trying to look like here, which is as, um, little impact as possible while providing the housing the community needs. Any questions on the agreement, I know you don't have it in front of you, but? Yes.
Thank you, is there anything that would make that conservation area permanent, like some, uh, deed restrictions or something to permanently prohibit any other development, to keep it as open space or conservation required activities?
Yes, the agreement provides that it would be demarcated on the plan as open space preserved in perpetuity, which means that they would not be able to develop it, you know, without revising the contract zoning agreement and the planning board-approved plan. Yes.
Um, there's been news articles about other trailer parks, and I don't wanna mean that it's necessarily the same with you, although there have been, as you acknowledge, issues concerning water. And I guess statewide and even nationally, trailer parks have a history of having issues with water. Uh, that's come out in a number of news reports that I've seen. I guess that's an underlying concern, that, uh, the, I know you've talked about targeted, uh, improvements. Um, a general phrase, hopeful that it, you know, the target might be able to focus on what areas of, uh, the wa- current water system for existing, uh, occupants there are, are weak and contributing to the, some of the woes that people have had with water being shut off, or water quality, or unpredictability in, in, in water availability. That's an underlying concern, and I guess it's one that, uh, seems from what I've read in other public, uh, uh, available resources that is pretty widespread with, uh, this type of a development. Uh, so it's something that I would be concerned, and I hope that the planning board would also be concerned with, is making sure that the, uh, the tenants, both the new tenants, uh, in the area that you're thinking of developing, as well as those existing in, in the area have access to portable water at all times, and with, uh, you know, some reasonable expectation that it's not gonna be, uh, subjected to, uh, interruption that could be, uh, to such an effect that would make it difficult to live there.
Well, kind of an interesting thing about this proposal is that if we were just putting forward the hundred-foot lots, neither the planning board nor the council would have jurisdiction to do anything about the original park. Um, or to, to force or cajole RHP to make any improvements to the original park. With this process, um, as part of this proposed expansion, we are proposing, um, sort of as an enticement, and really to address things that need to be done in, in that existing park anyway, but, you know, there are improvements that are going to be made that otherwise would not have to be made. And that includes, just to put a finer point on it, more isolation valves, that means fewer shutdowns, um, affecting fewer people. And, um, you know, flushing hydrants and extensions to complete water loops, and these are the kind of things that, again, but for this process, may not be done. So, um, overall, the existing development will be better off, and then the new development, which the planning board does have jurisdiction over, um, you know, the planning board is gonna take a good hard look, as it, it can and should, at that new development to make sure that all the provisions are as well engineered as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie.
On the water situation, I have an interest, I'm on that board with the water district, and I'm just wondering why you're not taking care of problems that have been there before, starting when we talked about it in the assessment, Board of Assessment. And, uh, why can't you do and have that done? Or is it a, is it a money situation, or what?
I think I'll let RHP to speak to that, but.
Just the ballpark, I.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's fair to say that this owner is not doing anything about it. I think there have been a lot of improvements, um, under RHP, and I think that, um, a lot of it is about communication and shutdown protocols.
You've done an awful lot of what the complaints were coming back in, but now we're saying we're not gonna do anything there. And, uh, may, I'm, I'm gonna look forward to seeing what comes.
Yeah, no, I mean, and they are, they are, as part of this process, um, going to make improvements to that existing water system. Again, it's not a full reinstallation of that system, but we're gonna do what we can to make improvements um, that really should impact the amount of shutdowns and the number of people they affect.
First of all, you really should do the improvements regardless if this moves forward or not. You're holding us hostage again like you did four months ago, we're not gonna do this unless we get this new park in. If we get this new park in now, we're gonna help with the other water system, but if we don't get the new park in, uh, maybe not. I don't like the idea, I think as Mr. Deacon said, uh, targeting, I, I, I actually wrote that down, uh, you know, I kinda thought that was a pretty shallow answer, uh, that we're gonna be targeting the water system. I'd like to really know what you mean by targeting, not, I like to see it on paper, what, it's not just, we're gonna monitor it better and we're gonna flush a hydrant. That, that doesn't help the system and help the people that are there, but it seems like, just like the other time you were here, well, if you don't do this, this is gonna happen, and I hate getting backed into a corner, and it seems like we're back, being backed in a corner again. Uh, you also said that if you had, went with a sixty, it would preserve a hundred and eighteen acres, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, if you went with a hundred, went to still preserve a hundred and ten acres, or a hundred and five acres, if you went with a hun- you're only gonna lose what, how many acres are you gonna lose if you went to the hundred foot versus sixty? You sound like it's all going away, it, only, only a few acres would go away, we'd still have a hundred and some acres. Did you guys ever figure it that way, how many acres you'd have if you went with a hundred-foot lots versus the sixty?
Yeah, we have, we have the alternate plan that was provided before.
What would it be then, what would the, uh?
We'll get you that answer.
Okay. But I mean, when you come in and you say something like, well, this, this'll go away if we don't do this, this new plan, it bothers me because it's not gonna go away, it's just gonna be a few acres less of conserved property, I would assume.
Well, I mean, keep in, keep in mind that that land does not have to be preserved, right? That's, that's something that we're offering.
So this is another thing you're offering, preserve, only if you get, only if you get the sixty foot. You're preserving if you get the sixty, but if we continue with a hundred, you're not gonna preserve the land, is that what you just said?
If the planning board, you know, can find a reason under the ordinance why that's necessary, obviously, you know, we'd have to do it. But the, a- and this is intended to be the last expansion, but the point is, these are things that we are agreeing to put the town in an enforcement position over that it wouldn't otherwise be. So the town, uh, in terms of the water, the town gets to have a peer reviewer who looks and makes recommendations about the water. Otherwise, you're leaving it to the company to figure it out on their own, you know, which they, they probably will do over time anyway, but the town wouldn't be involved in that. So that's what we're doing, is injecting the town into sort of an administrative role and an enforcement role to make sure that stuff gets done. Same thing with the open space, to make sure that, that land does not get developed and these areas get preserved.
Well, I'm gonna surely wanna know what you're targeting for the water system, and not just a simple flushing the lines or checking, uh, when a water spr- you know. We, we were talking about upgrading a system that would take care of everybody there, instead of adding a hundred and thirty new trailers and, and still continuing to use the old system, but I guess the only thing is, uh, what process are we sidestepping to allow this contract zoning? I mean, there's a reason you're here for the contract zoning, what steps are we sidestepping to, because you're here? Is it because we turned it down four months ago, the sixty foot, is that why you're now coming back with the contract zoning? Not quite sure. Is that, can you tell that's what it is?
Yeah.
So you're sidestepping the process that we had in place and trying to substitute it with the contract zoning?
Well, what we had, and, um, you know, maybe we sort of skipped through that part of things, but what we had before was a request that would impact not only this property, but any other mobile home throughout the, mobile home park throughout the town. And it appeared that the council was uncomfortable about that, but then it also appeared that the council was uncomfortable about some facets of Pine Tree Estates itself, such as the water. So it seemed to us that something that did not necessarily bring in every other mobile home park now or in the future, plus also held RHP's feet to the fire on some of those issues the council was concerned about, would be a way of bridging that gap and, and getting to an agreement that everybody felt more comfortable with, that does end up providing more affordable housing to, to people.
So the other trailer parks and standards would still be required to do the hundred-foot frontages? And this would be the only one that would be allowed to do the sixty?
Correct.
Wow.
I understand most of the park is sixty. I think it's a fresh interpretation that.
I thought you said about seventy, sixty percent, as you said.
Sixty percent.
So forty percent is a hundred.
And I think that's because of the septic fields that were out there, they needed to be a little bit larger. Not a hundred because it's a hundred. Again, I, you're taking your attorney's interpretation on the cluster that we can't cluster from a hundred foot wide down to fifty, and we're proposing sixty, that's why we're here again. We're determined not to be a holistic approach to your zoning change, so we're targeting this community, but this expansion will look eerily similar to the rest of the beautiful park that's out there, better than half. And again, I understand the comment on the water system, we've done a, a water study on this, great amount of detail. We're looking at, uh, a, a comprehensive solution to this, including upgrading our, our well pumps to variable speed pumps, adding some atmospheric storage, and also doing, uh, connecting some loops out there, putting air release valves that'll stop some of the water hammer that causes some of the breakage. So it's fairly comprehensive study was done, it's gonna be holistic approach to it, that'll, that'll significantly improve the existing system and accommodate, uh, the expansion. I started three years ago, I wish it was already done out, out there, but it's not done. We're still confirming that, that, that's the approach we wanna take, is a holistic approach to the system.
And with all this contracting, zoning, this probably isn't gonna get done, is that fair to say?
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we go home tonight, you guys say, get outta here, then we'll take another different look at it, I just, I just think this is the right thing to do, and I think we've, this is, this is the final approach for us here.
So this is doubling the size of the park. Do you, have you consulted with the residents, is there a resident board or a resident group that's weighed in on these changes?
Yeah, and the council has heard quite a bit from those residents too, and I think, um, I could provide you several direct quotes that say no one is against the expansion, um, but what they are saying they wanna see is these improvements to the water system in particular. And they wanna make sure their existing amenities don't go away, and that's one of the other things that this is holding RHP's feet to the fire on, that nothing changes in terms of what's there, it only improves in terms of the amenities, that kinda thing.
So there is, but there is no group, you're just talking about the comments that you've heard at the public hearings to date?
Uh, I mean, there, there is, is there a formal group, I don't know that there is.
I'm not aware of any formal group, I'll be certainly.
Can I speak to that?
We've, we've been here fourteen ti- times, I think, I think the community's pretty aware of it. And we've talked through a, a lot of, lot of issues through the last couple of years' operation, otherwise, and again, I think we're, we're there.
I gotta be quite honest with you, the people that have come to this council have not supported, I, I can remember people coming in, they were against this project, not for it. You said that you felt most people that you'd heard was for the project, you're, you might be hearing it, but they're not telling me or any other councils that I know of.
No, I, I hate to disagree, but there, there have been quite a number of people who say, we're not against the expansion, we want them to be able to expand, we just. And then the just is, we're concerned about the water, we're concerned about the amenities. So it's not, it's not in principle opposition to the expansion itself, it's, we wanna, we wanna take this opportunity to fix some of what's been broken.
But we're back to the same process, is if you don't get the expansion, they don't know if they're ever gonna get the water fixed.
Well, this is a way of getting it in black and white in an agreement that the town can enforce, which should make everybody feel better.
Thank you.
That's, that's the point, and I, I just had the, um, thought to Councilor Deacon's point about what you read in the news. I represent one of these towns that's had, um, a, a mobile home park that has had water issues. And that park has had full-fledged shutdowns of two weeks or more where water has to be trucked in, and in fact, the town had to pay for that water to be trucked in. You know, that is what I consider to be a significant problem, there's been nothing to that magnitude with this park. Um, and the problems that we have are all imminently fixable. Um, when you see those kinds of massive issues, it's a water supply problem. There's not a water supply problem, but, um, some minor infrastructure problems here that can be easily addressed. So, um, that, that's all I can say to that, and, and the other example that I'm giving without naming names, you know, that town was in the position ultimately of having to get a huge grant and, um, extending the water line, and getting the mobile home park to agree to make improvements, and all of this stuff. It was really complicated and expensive, luckily there was grant money available, but that's what a, a catastrophic, really bad water situation looks like. And that's how the town can, you know, end up stuck holding the bill when the developer's not doing the right thing as RHP is proposing, and getting an agreement that the town can force it to uphold.
Can I trust you, uh, to share?
Joel Brown, President of RHP Properties, uh, the, the, when I say, uh, there's a representation of the residents, uh, we operate in different states, and the lease agreement or the ordinance or whatnot requires a designated board and a designated, uh, resident association, in, in this particular case. There isn't one that we are aware of that is, has that same designation. The residents may feel differently, that what I would consider, and no, and no disrespect, that that may be more informal association of residents, and I think that they may wanna speak to that, 'cause I, I get that feeling.
Thank you.
Can I have Heather come up, 'cause she did raise her hand?
Um, Heather Richards, I am a resident of the park, and I am one of the more active members, I've been here before. We don't have a formal homeowners board, some of us would like to, but we've been told that it would be frowned upon. So we just do what we can as a, as a group of residents and keep each other informed, and that's, and, and communicate with the office as we can. Um, you know, to address your points about, you know, a catastrophic water issue being that water had to be trucked in and it was shut down for two weeks. You know, for me, a cata- it's, it is catastrophic, however, for me, when I have to on a twelve to eighteen month period have to boil my water for a week or so, um, every twelve to eighteen months, because there's been a break. And that's if I can even get a boil water notice, or anyone to respond to me when I leave a message like I did a couple of weeks ago, that my- or anyone to respond to me when I leave a message like I did a couple of weeks ago that my water pressure was low. That's our, part of our issue, is we're still having communication issues. I do think that the hydrants would be great because it would allow us to flush stuff out, which would mean we wouldn't have to boil water for so long cuz it would clean out the pipes. So it would get those people who had lost water or who had water that was contaminated, it would allow us to get our water back faster. So that works for me. Um but no, we don't have a formal board. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Deacon.
Thank you. Uh I appreciate uh the many times that uh your company has come before us and the residents as well. Is it within the parameters that we could, uh among the things that the town can require uh in contract zoning, that we could uh stipulate that there be a recognized tenant council? Uh and that tenants be able to participate in the hiring of maintenance staff? Among the things that have been raised is that the inadequacy of maintenance in some ways. And I'm wondering if this might be addressed by having a part of the requirements mandate that there be a council that's recognized and that uh the uh tenants be able to participate in hiring uh staff such as maintenance staff. And even one little thing that I I noticed that I, you know, kinda hurt me as an American and a veteran is uh full faith and credit in the mail system. So if somebody mails you a check, I I would ask that you respect the postal service to uh have adequately deemed that postage date. So when someone's trying to pay a bill, uh maybe recognize that date. Thank you.
Uh I guess to answer your question, I I don't think that would be a permissible uh condition in a contract zoning agreement, which the statute requires them to be related to, can any conditions to be related to uh the operation uh of the property. Include conditions and restrictions that relate to the physical development or operation of the property. So that's, I think, the, what's been proposed for improvements are uh the the sidewalk improvement that I guess according to, is not otherwise required by uh the site plan or subdivision requirements. Obviously, the water system upgrades that they're proposing relate to the physical development or operation of the property. I think there was a traffic, um I don't know if this was mentioned in the presentation, but there was a proposed traffic upgrade in the, uh that I saw in the uh in the agreement and the recreational amenities. So, you know, those are all things that I think would fall under that, but a requirement that sort of a third party to the contract create a, you know, a formal group, I think, would probably be outside of what what could be required in a, in a contract zoning agreement.
I would say that's short-sighted in that because of the comments that have been raised about the adequacy of the maintenance, you know, those things that, uh operation of the location. Because of the comments that have been raised, the participation of the tenants could certainly help develop trust between the parties, but also ensure the, potentially ensure the better performance of the operation of the park by having the tenants participate in the hiring process, so they're qualified people who uh attend to their duties with appropriate responsibility and accountability. Uh that's my point of view, uh at least on that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm certainly not weighing in on whether it's a good idea or not. I'm just, I, you're, I was just responding to your question whether it would be a permissible condition under the contract, and I, I don't, I don't think it would be cuz it sorta goes outside of the, the development or uh operation of the property by the, by the developer.
Uh Councilor Gabi, you had a question?
Thank you, but my question's been answered.
Okay. Uh Mr. Christie?
Where's the Portland Water District uh come in here?
They don't. It's a private wells. The Water District doesn't extend up there. They don't extend that far. Water District doesn't.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question.
Hi, Jason Affieto, Atlantic Resource Consultants. So the Portland Water District, this is not in the Portland Water District. So this is a, a private well um that's registered with the state of Maine as a public drinking supply. So there, through the Maine uh Drinking Water Program and the Department of Health and Human Services, there are uh testing that's done on this water, um all sorts of things that are done under that program. But this is not a public supply. It is, it is provided by the park to its residents under that program.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there uh any other council questions? Could you go ahead, Maury?
Maury Hill from Wildridge Road. I, I think, you know, based on what we're talking about in terms of accountability and um, you know, a citizen group or a group of people who actually live in the park, being able to um, you know, serve as really um a monitor. I don't, I don't know, you know, how the town would deal with continued problems because is that, is that left up to the code enforcement officer or, you know, who, who would make sure that things actually were proceeding as planned, as promised? The other issue, and this is a side issue, and I'm sorry to segue to this, but I think one of the other things that um has come up is that because it's private property, the county sheriffs don't have any jurisdiction in terms of problems, actually, problems. So that's a problem. I mean, I think that-
County does go in there. I did a ride along one day and we did go in there. And it is code enforcement that would help monitor that they're doing what they say they would.
Okay, all right. So um that was misinformation that-
They're allowed in.
That they're allowed in because they apparently said that to somebody, you know, the sheriff's department, somebody was the sheriff.
I mean, if it's a civil issue, they might not, but for, for other issues, they definitely, like I said, I did a ride along one day and we did go in there.
Yeah. So for what issue? I'm sorry.
A civil issue. If neighbors are having a dispute, the county doesn't handle civil issues anywhere.
If it was like an abuse issue, somebody was being abused, they would be able to go in. Okay. So I, you know, I think those are just questions that we have to look at as, um, you know, a town in terms of being responsible. And I think that, you know, having the water problems be ongoing is, I mean, I don't think the rest of us in our homes would put up with all of those boil water um orders that come up so frequently there. So, thank you.
Name's Anthony Folsom, eighty-five dollar Ford. I wanna thank Phil for bringing up the questions that he did tonight about this. The gentleman in the back that had something to say about the water when he originally came here. He said the new water system is gonna be a bigger pipe, higher volume, which is gonna end up having more breaks in the main pipe. It's gonna be tied in with the other one. So they're saying that they're only gonna fix part of it or put in valves or take it shut off. It's not helping the people that is in the park right now. Now, someone just said something about if it gets to a point that the water has to shut, shut down, the other place, the town had to pay for the water to be brought in. It wasn't an expense of them making the money off in the park. I don't believe this should go forward with the contract zoning, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Folsom, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sure, Ken.
Yes, and and so, I, I mean, I'm just curious cuz you, you've come and you've followed this, this issue from top to bottom. And so, you know, without the contract zoning, you know, it's possible that they could not improve the water at all or not make any changes to the system.
I think there should be a state law against that. If you're, you're owner of a property and you're providing bad water.
I mean, well, we were talking about standish, what standish can do today.
In general, water consuming, knowingly, knowingly that you're putting out bad water and say it's not our responsibility, and when it's their property, they're making the profit off of it.
But so on this particular issue, you would prefer to see no contract zone at all and have them maybe possibly move, have the right to move forward with, you know, the hundred lot footage as it is with, and and not repair the water?
I, I don't believe they're telling us the whole truth on all this ever since the first meeting that I've been here. I think they only give you a little bit of their information. I know they're already looking into the other trailer park in this town. So they could be coming to us the next time and trying to get a zoning on that area, contract zoning. I believe right from the very beginning, they were misleading and like Phil said, we've already made decisions on certain sizes of lot. I think we should have to stick to it. I think there's a lot of things that they're not telling us that they, they're gonna do that. They're just about what's gonna line their pockets. And it should be about the people of this town. We should be representing the people of this town. That's my belief. Thank you.
I just got one thing.
All right, Phil?
Since everybody's here, I just gotta ask this question because it was brought up. Would the park have any objections about a park citizens group being established? Would there be any problems with that happening? Do you, would you? Since you're all here, I'm just, could someone answer, would you have any problems with them forming a citizens group in your park?
Like anything that's been discussed, I'm, I would be open to that discussion with certain parameters, some guidelines, some boundaries, and things like that. I think it's uh, with all due respect, I don't think that it, for example, on the extreme, I don't think it's possible to have input on who's hired, uh on, on who we're hiring. And because I, I just, we're, we're responsible for so many different things associated with that. I don't think that we, it would make sense to have input on that. However, if the uh, if the residents uh want to have a more formal association that has um certain, you know, extended rights or input that they, they would wanna have, I, I'm, I'm open to it. And I think we're open to a lot of things, and that is the premise for the contract. I do, however, I do have a, a big issue with someone saying that we're not candid and that we're just trying to line our pockets and that we're misrepresenting anything because I think I've been up here enough and shared my beliefs and where, where we stand on things. And we are trying to move this forward in the best, most efficient, most agreeable form that we can. And I re- respect that people may not agree with that, and I respect that other people have different uh opinions of that. And I also respect that I don't say that we're perfect. However, to answer your question, I do think that it would make sense to have input from the residents and put something in there in the agreement, as long as it has certain guidelines that we both can agree on.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments?
Hi, Heather Richards again. Um Robert, I do thank you very much for speaking up about the issues that we've had with maintenance in the past. I do wanna let you know that they have hired two new maintenance guys. And to the best of my knowledge, most of us are very happy with the work that they're doing. So I just wanted to let you know that, that I, from what I'm hearing, that that issue is, is resolved. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I think that we came to that uh decision, that, that practice, that, that conclusion by getting in, input from the residents, and we appreciate that. And I'm glad that it's working out. I hope it continues. In my experience, we will hit a bumpy patch and it won't be perfect for, for forever. But we will appreciate the, uh, input from the residents if, if it comes to be a problem.
Joe, I'd like to ask you one question. And it's not super germane to this contract zoning, but it pertains to affordability. I know it's another thing that's been a big hot, hot, hot button topic on this. And just for my own edification, I kinda did some research in other parks around. And the lot rents that you guys were mentioning are significantly higher than some others in the area. And I just wonder if you put any other thought towards what you might target as a, a lot rent?
Are you suggesting the, the lot rents that we propose for the new development would be higher than the-
Are significantly higher, and even your other lot rents are, are subs- higher in some areas.
Uh, it's fair. It's fair to say that our, our rents are generally are on the higher side of market. It's not just this community, but I would say that that's, that's across the country where we operate. It's, it's difficult for me to, to even uh represent that the new community, the, the new or the new development that we're proposing would have any rents that would be lower than we, we had proposed. It's hard for us to get there. Um so I, I think I would be uh remiss if I suggested otherwise.
Thank you.
However, we, we, we do feel that that's, you know, still within what we would consider affordable, meeting the market as we, as it relates to comparing it to other forms of housing that would be available, including single-family, including single-family rentals and also multifamily rentals. We still believe that this would be a comparable, affordable option.
Can you give an example of what the rents, you might, you know, ballpark what they might be looking at for the new, new, the new development? Just a approximation.
Site rent, excuse me, the site rent portion for, uh, we're proposing is approximately eight hundred and fifty dollars for the site rent.
Thank you.
What's your, what's your rent now in the older? What are they paying right now in the older section? Is it hundreds of dollars or pretty close or? Yeah, I don't need a lot. I'm just trying to-
The average, I, I know some residents are here and they may, may have different rents, but the, uh, just when I'm saying the in-place residents, so the residents that are there now, the average rent is uh around six hundred dollars, okay? The market rent, if you were to move into the community now, is different than that. That's about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty dollars. So what we're proposing is currently, to start with, that new development would be par with what the market rent is for a new resident in the existing community. Does that make sense?
It does.
So if I sell, my, if I'm paying six fifty and I sell my, wanna sell my trailer, the buyers coming in to that would go to eight fifty. Is that what?
I don't know the eight fifty, but eight hu- eight hun- or yes, that is a correct concept of what you're saying, yes.
So is it hard to sell mobile homes knowing that, that, you know, your neighbor's paying six fifty and you're gonna be paying eight fifty?
It's a very, it's a very good question. And, and it came up last time. And, and, and so what, what we have seen is that the homes that are for sale by owner in the community, I may hear otherwise tonight, the last time we checked, was a short list of homes that was for sale. There was one buyer that wasn't able to sell their home. We bought that home from them. We then resold that home within days at the rent that I'm talking about. So we believe, well, I understand there's an affordability issue, and I'm not dismissing that in any way, shape, or form. There is a market to sell homes at the rent that we're renting at. And we, we, and we have purchased homes from buyers who have suggested that they couldn't sell them, and then we resold them for the same reason that I just suggested.
Thank you. Was there, uh, yes, Mr. Christie?
Why is the fifty-five age the magic number? And I'll tell you, my, I've got two daughters right now, like, they'll move back to the state of Maine and they take advantage of this. Why is that such a big figure? I'm eighty-five and I want, you know, I'm-
You're eighty-five?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
No.
Yeah, so, just for your general knowledge, so this came out of uh some federal legislation where communities were looking to bring in residents that would not be a drain on community systems such as schools and, and things like that. And so what, what you'll find in this national traffic studies and demographic studies is that fifty-five and older people's children have grown up, so they're no longer in the school system. Uh, and they also have different habits for driving, uh work schedules. They tend to be more on the retired side than not. And so you're, you're, you're reducing impacts across the community for things that cost the town money. And so that's, it was a, it was a tax incentive um for towns to promote fifty-five and older housing because you were getting the tax revenue, but you were not getting the drain on community services. So that's where it comes from. But that was in the seventies.
My daughter's here today and I'll have her, that, that information when I go back and I'm not gonna do it.
Yeah. So, but things have changed. Legislation hasn't caught up with that, that we have seen some projects we're working on that age is moving to sixty-five.
I hope that happens, and there's so much, and to me, that's a positive for the state of Maine or any state to do that. And it's a good mix to go in with the people that are 55. I know right now, you know, the youngest.
Anthony Folsom, $85 for, as Sarah said, I've been doing this since the very beginning of these guys coming forward. Originally, I kind of lost train of thought, but when we stood up and talked to the council, there was a few of us here that had problems with it. And Joel said that he was willing to reach out to us. And I was waiting for a phone call, and I never received it. And then the next meeting, I ran into him, and I said, geez, I thought you were going to give me a call and talk this out. And he goes, well, I've heard that you don't live in the trailer park, so it doesn't affect you. So, and I looked at him and said, well, I'm a concerned citizen of Standish. And that's why I come to these meetings, and I care about everybody that's at these meetings. So I just wanted to point that out. And about the 55 and older community, something came up in the comprehension meetings the other night, pretty sure Zach said it, that what is the town going to do? Go down and check everybody's license, license to see if they're 55 and older in the community?
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, so there's an issue with the, I know you said something about it one time when I asked you a question about the 55 and older community, how long it stays within the 55.
And that, I think, depends on the funding.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, Zach pointed out that, you know, it's going to be hard for the town to enforce the 55 and older community to stay that way. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I think I heard the comment about the over 55. We're obligated to police that ourselves. That's a requirement of us, and we keep very good records of the residents with dates and births and whether or not their occupants are of the required age. So I don't have any concern about making sure that that is sustainable. And then I won't even comment on the other references to my choice to not make phone calls back because that's not true.
But Joel, does, does it seem with for-profit housing that, that your, the age restriction would be essentially looked over by auditors who are looking at your files, depending on where your funding comes from, or?
Our lender does not typically do that. We do, it is a requirement in other states, and we do get audited. And we're making sure that we have a system in place to do that. It's our intention to do, you know, how we operate there, particularly Florida, how we operate there, that we would do the same thing here, as we also do operate over 55 in states that are not, not just Florida.
Does it seem easy to fill up the over 55 part of your park? Or is it difficult? I mean, if you can't fill it up, are you going to let vacant sites sit there? Or would you plug them in with younger people? I mean, does it normally fill up the 55?
I would not violate the restriction to fill up a site if we can't sell a home to an over 55 resident. That is, that's a no-go. I don't have any, I, for the same reasons that I pointed out about our confidence in the market, and I've been, I only do this, and this is 30 years of being in the business. I don't have any concerns about the demand that's out there in either over 55 or under 55. And so I don't, there's not a reason that we would do it, nor would we do it even if there was a concern.
Joel, I have another, I have a question. These new lots, is it envisioned that you will provide the homes for those lots? Or are people allowed to bring their homes in for these lots?
Our typical model is that we bring in a home and we sell them for spec. We don't do custom orders. We put a home, we just had a home on a vacant site come in. The original section was the last one that we did. That's how we sell. We, we order and deliver probably 2,500 to 3,000 homes from the manufacturers across the country. That's how we operate, and we sell those homes. We would intend to do the same thing here on spec. If a resident came to us and they had a home that they wanted to bring in and it met, you know, all of the requirements, then we would certainly be amenable to that. And we do that. We refer to that as an organic, where a resident brings it in, and they buy it from another dealer. But it doesn't, it used, that used to be the old model in the business. That's not typical these days.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
A point of information. When was the last contract zoning that was approved in town? Do you know?
We only have one other contract zone that was approved, I think about three years ago now, maybe three and a half.
Where is it?
It's behind Papa's Ice Cream for Solar Development.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Can we hear Mr. Trump adjourned?
So, Zach, do you want to?
Just again, I do think, is this something the council wants to see move forward? I don't know if, you know, that's kind of where we're, where we're looking to get to tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the idea for tonight's meeting was to get sort of an idea whether to move forward or not, I guess.
Well, we can't vote. I guess I would say, what is holding me up is the existing water problem. And if you'd have shown me any type of improvements tonight and come here and said, we've already done this, we've already done this, I would have been, I would be happy. So I'm, this is my only concern. And if you, I just don't want to be held hostage that if this isn't built, this isn't getting done. That, throw that out the window. Why don't you start working on the plan that you've told us about tonight? And that would definitely sway my vote a lot. Thank you.
I mean, I'm disappointed that there's a document out there that we haven't seen.
Exactly.
And so without that, I can't weigh in.
Yeah, it would be nice to be able to review the contract zoning.
Yeah, we got this tonight, this is always.
I know, I think there is a disconnect there. Our intention had been that there would be an agreement in front of you that we could all look through together.
We just met though with attorneys today, and it was messy and hard to understand. And we know that you don't like to receive it day of, so it's more the general, we've met several times. You know, like, do you want to move forward or not? And so it's not set in motion, but it would have been harder to understand and last minute. So that's why Steph and myself chose not to distribute.
And I appreciate that, but if we're talking about, if a big issue is the water issue, and that's in this document, I think we can't weigh in on that without seeing.
The document, I don't think, addresses specific water issues.
It says the types of things, and I named some of them, like the additional shut-offs and the loops and the hydrants. I think what we could offer to bring the next time we're in front of the council and the next time we're in front of the planning board is a more fleshed-out water system improvement plan, so you could see the nitty-gritty of it. I'm not sure to the layperson it's necessarily going to be penetrable, but yeah, we can definitely offer to do that, so you can see the concrete pieces of it.
Are there already hydrants in place in the, in the Eintry Park? So there is none in place ever, even though we've had this problem? And you say that's how it could be corrected? Surprised we're talking about it tonight.
The traditional fire protection is not, not there. Actually, there's a part of this plan as well to provide some water storage for fire protection, but the traditional fire hydrant, no, we're talking about flushing hydrants.
Where, what, explain what a flushing hydrant is.
Just, again, to flush out the system. A lot of what we have is we got dead ends, and you can get pressure variables, and you get water hammer and all that. So we're putting flushing hydrants in certain points to keep air and keep flow through the hydrant, through the system.
Okay, let's get these in place.
Kind of firefighting manner.
Okay, I agree. I understand. I didn't know if they were already in place and they weren't being used properly.
No, they're not.
They're not in place at all, okay.
Mr. Deacon?
I think I heard some comment that in other parks that you administer, there are tenant councils of some sort or some sort of tenant association of some form. And your, some of your comments indicate some willingness to consider that. So maybe you could suggest, based on your experience elsewhere, where there are such groups or councils from people who live there, what you suggest might be a workable type arrangement and put that in your proposal.
Yeah, and as a preface to that, I would just say, in a lot of cases, I'm sure those are just organically created tenant associations that, you know, organized, and there's nothing preventing this group from doing so either. I think what we're a little wary about is having specifics in a contract zoning agreement where it's kind of outside the parameters of what the law and the ordinance call for. That would sort of have the town saying, well, you didn't, you know, take the tenant council's point of view on who you should hire, and you're in violation of the whole project. That would be a bit scary to us, but Joel will speak to kind of the viability of.
Just to be clear, the only place that we have formal HOA boards is in the state of Florida, where you require, they have the right to have the board, and we have an obligation to meet with that board regarding certain things. And so that is the only place that I feel comfortable having a, you know, I would say it's very specific set of rules because it's governed by statute. Here, it would be more difficult, and I think we would probably run into some issues. I think it would be hard not to if we had it not very spelled out. And I don't know how to spell it out because it's not part of the statute. That's really, the difficulty in it. But I'm not opposed to having, and I'll use this term loosely, an informal board that can meet with on a more formal, regular basis with the manager rather than the obligation to do it when they feel the time necessary. But we can create an informal process that is a regular meet with a certain representatives of the community. The difficulty is whether, hopefully, that those representatives are, you know, agreed upon by the rest of the residents. Some residents may feel that they're not speaking on their behalf or may feel otherwise. But I think that that would make a lot of sense and open to it. Whether this goes forward or not, I think that that may be useful.
Thank you.
Chair and Councilor Gavitt, what do you guys?
What was your thoughts?
I mean, I, again, I would like to be able to review the actual document because I think just sitting here with the presentation, it's hard to understand the actual points that were made as far as what the contract zone is proposing. I mean, I know, obviously, the lot frontage is one of the biggest issues that's come in front of us. But I think to really parse out the give and take of what's occurring is a little difficult without reviewing it.
Would it be helpful to, for me to try to summarize again or for the applicant to try to summarize?
Sure.
I think, broadly speaking, I think what you have is, on the one side, what they're requesting is the 60 feet of frontage instead of the 100 foot, which is required for all other manufactured housing parks, as was pointed out, okay? And I may have misspoke on that point before. I may have said the underlying zone required 100, 100 feet. I think it's not the underlying zone, that it's the existing provision that relates to mobile home parks that requires 100 feet. They're asking for 60. That's the only sort of, you know, for lack of a better word, variance from the zoning ordinance that they're requesting. I think what, in exchange, what they're proposing is, and they can correct me if there's any other, but I just wanted, I want to crystallize it for the council, so. Preservation of open space that's deed restricted. Recreational amenities, preserving the existing ones and adding new ones that they discussed. Obviously, the water system upgrade that has had a lot of discussion tonight, that will be required to be peer-reviewed at their expense. Sidewalk loop around the red area that was shown on the plan. And some traffic improvements as well. There was, I don't know, there wasn't discussed much, but improving existing turning lanes, adding a passing lane for the two on Route 25. 55-plus housing in half of the units. And the agreement that we circulated back and forth, there was an agreement to comply with the federal regulation that requires verification of that 55-plus. And again, all of these restrictions are enforceable. The whole point of a contract zoning agreement is that all of those things are not just sort of promises that would need to be enforced through like a breach of contract action or something like that. They're all essentially zoning provisions that are enforceable by the code enforcement officer, just like any other zoning provision, okay? So that's, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. That's, that's the point of, that you put some teeth into these restrictions, that they're not just either promises that, you know, may or may not happen, or they are things that require, you know, I mean, they may require legal action to enforce, as you know, I mean, there's, you know, JP and I work, you know, on land use enforcement actions in other contexts, but I think the point is that those are all things that are, have the effect or have the power of a zoning ordinance provision. So I think, I think I named all of them. Is there anything I was missing sort of on the restriction side? So that, that's, I think, really conceptually, and I think that's what Tashi was sort of saying, is that the agreement that we've sort of gone back and forth to both to put it into the town's normal contract zoning agreement format, but also to add some provisions in there that are sort of standard, standish provisions for contract zoning agreements, is quite messy right now. But I think the idea was to sort of at a high level, talk about what they're asking for, which is the 60 feet instead of 100 that is normally required for mobile home parks for frontage. And then in exchange, all, those various improvements or those various provisions that are enforceable by the town in the event that they don't meet those things. So that's, I just wanted to sort of, you know, go through that, just so that, summarize, I guess.
Yeah, and thank you. And I'm just curious, Councilor Watson, because you're sitting on the comprehensive plan board, and I know that they're, you know, looking at this, you know, with our old comprehensive plan. Have there been any discussions about, you know, I mean, I know you're still early in the process, so I just wanted to feel that out.
I don't think there's been any discussions on that would really be germane or cover this type of thing as of yet. It's, haven't gotten there yet.
No, we haven't got any policy, any policy yet with the comp plan, just.
Overviews.
Overviews.
Thank you.
Mr. Deacon, do you have anything to weigh in on, on where your opinion lays on this?
I'd like to have the other document that was talked about. And maybe, I'm not opposed, I mean, certainly there's a housing crisis in Maine. And, you know, I am loath to say I'm not caring about people who see benefits to expanding housing here. But I would like to see the other document and also maybe suggest that we invite our elected representatives, senators and state representatives to come and talk to us about maybe state requirements for, to require home tenant associations like they do in Florida. Invite them to come and speak to the council to maybe suggest changes in state law. But I'm otherwise open to go forward.
Mr. Thomas, do you have anything else to say?
Like, the devil's in the details.
Right.
I mean, I obviously want to see the document, so I want to make sure that we're taking care of the current residents. That's my big concern. This park is doubling in size, and I want to make sure they just don't get mowed over just for the purposes of expansion. So that's really important to me.
It's, I agree with everybody that it would be really nice to have read what it is, but it also is, it's going to be 100 foot or it's going to be 60 foot. It's going to be contract zone or it's going to be not contract zone. You know, it's, we're not deciding that it's going to go to contract zone. We're just deciding if it's going to, we're actually going to see the documents. So I guess what's our conclusion, and we want to see, let it go forward and see the documents?
Is this stalled in planning board process? Is this now a dead issue at planning board, or are you still moving forward there? That's one thing I didn't know.
I don't. Is it going through?
Is it still moving through a planning board process at all, or is it stalled now, or?
No, it's been withdrawn at the planning board. It will only go back to the planning board if they decide to proceed with the 100 foot.
All right, thank you.
I think we need to make some consensus, and I think we're split on what we want to do.
I mean, I think that it would make sense, you know, I mean, and just conversationally, to perhaps move forward, and then we can all look at the document, and we'll have the opportunity to vote at that time of whether or not it meets your expectations or not.
I think that might be the only way forward is.
Or we can move to another workshop if it had to be. Or we can move to another workshop if it had to be, because like I agree with Councilor Thomas, you know, when I got this paper, I come down today and looked at my box again, thinking I might have left something in, because I had no information as to a lot about what we're doing here. So maybe once we had this and the more targeting of the water systems and all that, maybe instead of airing it in a council meeting, we should come back into a workshop. But I have no problem moving forward as long as we can see some, like we said, documents and some more water.
From my understanding, it sounds like we wanna move forward and get the documents, and, you know, then proceed for that.
Okay, so it sounds like probably a more sort of worked-on agreement that would come before for a workshop? Is that what I'm hearing, as opposed to...
Instead of the full council?
You need a motion.
I don't think we don't know motions.
It's just a temperature of whether we should...
This is a workshop, but I just, if that's the idea, I mean, I understand that, you know, sometimes it's helpful to see it down on paper. But if that's, if that's the idea, we can certainly, you know, have a, you know, have a more, you know, fleshed-out agreement that could come before the council on a future workshop.
I just wanted to ask if it would be possible, though, if we could go ahead and start the formal application process at the same time, so that at least it's teed up for the planning board, and we have a proposed agreement that's on the table.
I don't, I don't see why not, yeah.
Again, we're conscientious about trying to avoid ping-ponging, but we also don't wanna spend, you know, a lot of extra time that we might be able to at least get the ball rolling with an application.
But you'd be submitting the contract zoning agreement with the application, correct?
We would. It would be a draft, and then I suppose if there were changes after the workshop, we'd just change the draft that's on in front of the planning board.
I think that's normally how it's done. I'm assuming when we come to planning board, we're looking for a final way out of this instead of poking along, rolling the ball down the hill slow, you know, where. But I think the idea of the thing is to do it in a workshop, then to get out there in the council and get stumbled, and then we have to make a vote that night possibly, you know?
Okay, so I guess I think that's the plan. Look at the actual documents and the application at a workshop. Any other suggestions, comments?
No disagreement, yeah. That sounds fine.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second that motion. All in favor of adjourning? Thank you.